Time is now 6:30. And it is with a heavy heart, given our loss on Monday, that I opened this June 19, 2024 meeting of the Cedarburg School Board. This is a regular meeting of the Cedarburg School Board and is a public meeting. Prior notices have been placed in the district and additional copies were forwarded to the city and the town of Cedarburg, as well as in News Graphic and Milwaukee Journal Sentinel. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as all.
We'll start out with recognitions, and those begin with state proclamations. Kate Nutzel.
The state of Wisconsin has declared the following proclamation. June 17 through 21st, 2024 is summer meals week. All proclamations are available on the district's board docs webpage.
Thank you. And now we have the 2023 to 24 Cedarburg School District Student Perfect Attendance Honor Dr. Clark.
Yeah, thank you. Yep, this is for perfect attendance. These are students who did not miss a single day. I'll just read off their names. From Thorson is Andy Arns, Harrison Arns, and Olivia Smith. From Parkview, Hannah Scholes. From Webster, Nathan Nguyen, Sharon Pousatieri, Regan Ruizah. From the high school, Lucas Bridger, Carter Leder, Brianna Lusk, John Moslick, Anna Miller, Catherine Scholalter, Ryan Winker, Madeline Wutinsky, Irina Yishimov, and Zachary Zaleski. I'd like to point out that Zachary and Brianna did not miss a single day of school for all four years at the high school, which is kind of remarkable.
Wow, so they got some contenders for the perfect attendance award at graduation next year.
Correct. Yep.
All right. Next, we move on to the consent agenda. Dr. Clark.
All right. With regards to the consent agenda, board members, I ask that you approve the minutes from the regular board meeting on May 15, 2024, and the special board meeting on June 11, 2024. The budget and finance report, which includes a summary of account, check register, check detail, and credit card transaction reports, and the personnel report. Mr. De Rosa, Director of Human Resources, will provide a brief overview of the personnel report.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. Good evening. Tonight, we are seeking board approval for the following resignations from the district: Taylor Vinendall, Jennifer Biggess, Bianca Santa Maria, Kayla Young, Kelsey Bolon, Brad Defoe, and Courtney Smith. We are also seeking approval for the recommended hires: Bailey Ramech, Victoria Weinfurter, and for the new Thorson principal coming back to the district, Brandon Ruff.
All right. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
I would second that.
A motion and a second on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion?
For the budget and finance report, there's a typo on page 44. It says interviewees rather than interviewers for a meal, so I've requested that that be changed. And then for the personnel report, I'd asked what the comparison number-wise from last year to this year is for those leaving the district. Do you have that offhand, Tony?
Nope. That was my bad. I forgot.
Okay.
All right. So with the correction of the typo, you said page 42?
Forty-four.
Forty-four, yeah.
Any other comments or discussion on this motion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Can I ask why you would abstain from approving the consent agenda?
I think you can. I feel like I generally share why I vote the way I do, and I don't feel like I particularly have to in this instance. I like to be able to ask all of my questions, and honestly, sometimes I think it's just speeds are meeting along. That's how I feel about it. That's where I'm at. Thank you.
Okay, so there's no conflict or anything like that as far as?
For the budget and finance, there was a typo. I got here half an hour early to ask questions in person, and I also took the time to ask questions ahead of this meeting regarding the personnel. I don't have answers to those questions, and I haven't had the opportunity, because there was a fire alarm, to ask the additional questions. So you are all welcome to ask me why I vote the way I do, but I hope it's recognized at this table that I don't do the same to other board members. I understand what a yes means, what a no means, what an abstain means, and I would ask that you respect that. Thank you.
All right. Any more? I guess we already voted on that. Okay.
I would like to highlight that in the personnel report, as Mr. De Rosa stated, the new principal for Thorson Elementary School is in there, Mr. Brandon Ruff. Brandon, if you want to stand up, won't make you say anything. Brandon, as mentioned, is coming back to the district. He spent the last two years in Monomie Falls as assistant principal at North Middle School. Prior to that, he actually taught at Webster for 10 years, so he is well versed in Cedarburg.
He's not going to give a speech?
I told him he didn't have to.
Okay. Won't be very entertaining.
Welcome.
Yes, thank you.
Welcome back.
All right. Can we move on to the superintendent?
Yeah. Yep, Dr. Clark. Correct. At this time, I'd like for us to spend a moment to remember Mr. Tom Hartman, who passed away at this pass from Monday in a vehicle incident. Tom was a beloved fifth-grade teacher at Thorson Elementary School, and he had taught at Thorson since 1993. Tom positively impacted generations of elementary school students in the Cedarburg School District. While he is remembered fondly for many things, it was his passion for math and his ability to help many students also develop a passion for math that stands out to many. Please keep Tom's family and your thoughts as they go through this difficult time. Thank you. As we turn our attention back to tonight's agenda, I'd like to recognize Mr. Ben Irwin, Director of Business Services. I believe last year I jokingly referred to the June board meeting as the Ben Irwin Show, and as you take a look at the agenda tonight, I think the same applies. I think it's, and I think that's quite fitting, I am both sad and excited for this evening's meeting, in that this will be Ben's last meeting as the Director of Businesses and Services for the Cedarburg School District. While I'm sad for myself and the district, I'm very happy for Ben. It has truly been my privilege to have worked with Ben for the past two years. I'm not exaggerating when I say that Ben is one of the most dedicated, ethical, responsible, and effective men I know. During superintendent school, my instructors made a point of letting future superintendents know that a good business manager is vital to the success of any superintendent. In fact, they said one of the number-one reasons, if not the number-one reason, superintendents get fired is because of business office-related issues. I can truly say that I've never had that concern. Ben has always been proactive and on top of all things financial, and has ensured the district has a solid financial footing. Ben, thank you for being you and doing such a fantastic job for the Cedarburg School District. Ben, I wish you all the best.
Absolutely, Ben. I couldn't agree more. It really has been great working with you over all these years, and have appreciated your creativity and your expertise has been invaluable to this district. And one of the other things I found really important was your ability to explain these very complex, almost convoluted, financial processes and reporting, not only to the board members, but to members of the public when they would ask questions. And we truly appreciate your knowledge and help on that regard. Best of luck, Ben. All right. Are you all at the superintendent's room?
I am done.
Okay. So next is public comment. Nobody signed up. Is there anyone who wishes to make public comment tonight? Seeing nobody, we will move to Part 6 of recommendations. Dr. Clark.
All right. This evening, we will be presenting 13 recommendations to the board. The first recommendation is for the board to approve the Education for Employment Plan for the 2024-25 school year. This recommendation is being forwarded to the full board for approval by the Curriculum Committee. The Education for Employment, or PI 26, is legislation that requires academic and career planning to take place in all public schools in Wisconsin. The E4E plan must be approved by the board annually.
She's not here, but I can answer any questions.
I motion approval of the E4E plan as presented.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? She carries unanimously.
All right. The next seven recommendations have all been forwarded by the Personnel and Finance Committee and forwarded to the full board for approval. Mr. Irwin is available to provide more information regarding each recommendation.
Well, first of all, thank you for all your kind words. Cedarburg's been a tremendous place to work. I really value my time here. It was very bittersweet to make this transition, but I can't say enough positive things for Cedarburg and this district. Talking to Kim and going through this transition, I keep on telling you, you have great staff, district office, teachers, custodians, just across the board. The level of support from the board and the community has been great to see over the years, and this makes our job a lot easier when we see that. So thank you again for just taking a chance on me eight years ago, and we got to here. Like Dr. Clark said, it's kind of the Ben Show for the next little bit, but most of these items have been vetted through Personnel and Finance Committee already, and a lot of them are annual topics. So the first one's looking at our renewal with Airmark. So Airmark's our food service provider. Every five years, as part of the federal program, we have to put the service out to bid, which we did the last couple of months. So it's a very structured process through DPI. We submit the bid to multiple vendors. They come in, interview us, and then also walk through our facility a little bit, and then submit proposals, and then there's deadlines for when they can submit that, and we review them. There's a scoring matrix that DPI reviews based on different criteria that we value or weight within our system, with finance and budget being the heavily weighted one. But there's other things, like the director, food service quality experience, stuff like that, that are all part of that process. The two companies that bid were our current provider, Airmark, and Arbor Management was the second bid. And Airmark, you know, had the high score in pretty much all the metrics, so it was very easy to recommend them to our Personnel and Finance Committee for a renewal with them for the upcoming year. As part of the budget finance piece, you know, their rates were lower than our other bid from Arbor Management, but even with that, they have a $50,000 surplus guarantee as part of their bid proposal for next year. So regardless of what participation looks like, they'll return at least $50,000 back to the district.
All right. Do I have a motion on the 2024 to 25 Airmark proposal?
I'll move to approve the 24-25 renewal with Airmark as presented.
I will second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next agenda item is looking at another big service for the school district, our transportation provider, RightWay. RightWay's our current provider. The contract that we signed in 2016 is up for, is due to expire at the end of this fiscal year. So in negotiations over the last couple of months, we were looking at an extension with them for another two years. The two-year extension would set an increase of CPI for next year, and then a CPI plus 2% increase for 25-26. With that, it references our past addendums with RightWay in our contracts, so there's clauses in there for early cancellation, as long as we let them know by February 1st, and other pieces like that that, you know, put the district in the best position possible. With me leaving and Kim coming on, she'll be able to continue to evaluate that service with the district and determine next steps, either 25-26 or 26-27.
This went through the PNF Committee and they had their questions answered.
We did. We did a fair amount of discussion with RightWay and brought up concerns about, you know, that CPI plus 2 without knowing what CPI is. The bottom line is we're doing the best we can with the services, you know, options we have available to us. We did also discuss some insurance that they wanted to reduce, and we haven't kept that where it was at, because we were not able to lower the rates. But I'm hoping that it's something we can continue to look at and do have an option to change before February 1st, if necessary.
I could, I have a motion on the RightWay renewal.
I would make a motion to approve the renewal as presented.
I'll second. Motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I had a question. So I would say that the RightWay bus experience has been, had its ups and downs. I know many of us on the board have heard from members in the public, especially in the beginning of the school year, about issues with RightWay, with, you know, missed routes or bus drivers not coming in. So Ben, can you share any information about what kind of, what could you share about what due diligence was done to come up with the best transportation option possible for Cedarburg? Because I can just foresee some people wondering why we're not going with a different company or why we're not doing our own buses or things like that.
Yeah, the biggest challenge we had this year, especially to start the year, was just staffing for drivers. And so for the first month or so, that was a real challenge for RightWay in terms of we have sub-drivers or just no drivers at all. That definitely disrupts our routes within the system. The good news was over, as we got to the school year, they hired two additional drivers, and then after that, it kind of leveled out a little bit and became a lot more stable. But it's something we continue to meet with them on and hold them accountable for. Kim and I met with them earlier this week and just kind of set forth our kind of expectations moving forward, diving more into some kind of performance metrics that we can gauge in the future and kind of really hold them accountable for. The hard part is just there's not a lot of competition out there for the market. So there's other bus providers, but, you know, some are outside the area. Making that switch is a big endeavor, and our rates are very competitive for what we're seeing. So at the time, we were looking at it, we went through that analysis, we met with other providers, you know, over the course of the winter, and during that, through that process, we just viewed, you know, if we went out to bid, the biggest risk for the district would be increases 15%, 20% possibly, which would take away from the financial resources we have for instruction and everything else. And so continuing to meet with RightWay and just get them to a point of setting our expectations moving forward, let them know where we're at in the shorter extension rather than like a five-year extension, because that was their original proposal, was a five-year extension, and a higher increase above CPI. Let them know that, you know, we're continuing to be reviewing this and keeping, you know, on tap, so.
Thank you.
And having our own school-owned buses, that was looked at, I think, and just the numbers don't work on that.
Yeah, I mean, it would be very costly, and no guarantee that I would fix the issue is it either, because we'd have to find the drivers as well, so.
Are we, we're still in discussion? Yeah. I appreciate the extra input from both Kate and Elizabeth down there. My, I believe there were, were there two different accidents that were involved, buses this year?
There was one that happened in the spring, another, yeah, fall, where a car, like, the one in fall kind of sideswiped the bus or got close to it, no damage to the van. Both incidents, no incidents were injured at all.
Okay.
The other one, the car turned in front of a bus and the same thing there.
Okay.
So buses, and even on the second one, I don't think it had any damage at all. RightWay was on-site right away, administrator was on-site right away, and officer was on-site right away as well. Communications with parents immediately, and then we got another bus out there to get them, get them to school, so.
And I'd imagine the investigations are completed, right? If CPD came out, they'd be done by now to determine whether the driver was at fault, which driver was at fault for those, and it?
I haven't seen the final report, but I assume, yeah, I'm just.
Okay. Yeah, so just asking again for due diligence, I agree. I would foresee parents, given things that have come up, especially in the past two years, wondering why you're continuing with RightWay when there have been issues. So I appreciate the amount of work that's gone in to basically saying, no, we're not saying yes to you for another five years. I think that in and of itself, hopefully, is holding a little bit more of accountability. So thank you for going out on-site and doing the best you can to communicate with parents and anyone involved in those incidents.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right. The next item's looking at our general insurance renewals. So those would be insurance coverages for property, auto, liability insurance, workers' comp, umbrella coverage, cyber, all those different pieces that are district unemployment coverages. Personnel and Finance Committee went through this proposal. The increase was originally $48,000. We brought it down a little bit after the conversation at the PNF level, and that's mostly from choosing a different cyber provider. But essentially, the biggest areas we saw increases were for property. So our property values went up by 25% over this last fall from our view, they do every couple of years. So driving that price up, you know, property's valued more, you're going to have to pay more for that. Overall, rate's still competitive. It's about $0.04 for every $100 of property value, whereas a lot of industry standards tend to be around $0.07 for every $100. So still very competitive with that, but, you know, an increase there. And the other area was in workers' comp. Workers' comp, that premium's dictated by a formula from the state that's based on basically three years of incidents. And so our rate went from .85 to 1.06, and so that's a reflection of kind of some recent incidents we had. So that'll be something we'll continue to keep an eye on and monitor to help minimize those as much as possible. Obviously, we have some pieces in there that we can help be proactive with to prevent incidents, and other things that's come up out of the nature of the work. And then the other one, like I mentioned, switching cyber providers. Two companies bid on our cyber insurance and, you know, our current provider, and then newer provider as well, and both came highly recommended from our insurance broker. Both are highly rated within the insurance industry, so we went with the lower one with the lower premium price. So ended up in a good position. But overall, the cost impact of the increase ended up being just under $38,000 for this year.
All right. Do I have a motion on the general insurance renewal?
I would make a motion to approve the 24-25 general insurance renewal as presented.
I will second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right. Ben and the PNF Committee, thank you for all your work on this. This was, I know this one's a tough one, the market is, like you said, the property, I'm kind of surprised, given the amount of increase of value that we're calculated to have, that we didn't get a lot, you know, I see a lot higher premium on that. It's going the wrong direction, but that's just the way it is in this market right now with this economy, so nothing we can do about it. But I know, I know you guys put a lot of work into it and got it as absolutely best as you could, so thank you for all that. All right. Then, I guess, any more discussion?
I'll echo that and say thank you, especially for the cost savings for that tech piece, I think it was, right?
Cyber.
Cyber. Thank you.
All right. So do we have? Oh, yep, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Our next item's an annual topic, looking at budget revisions for the current fiscal year that's just about to end. Over the course of the year, the board will take action on specific items, for example, like the debt defeesance we did in Fund 39 earlier this year. But what we do at the end of the year is kind of bring them all together and present any budget revisions for the fiscal year as we start to close that out. Most of the budget revisions, we typically get our smaller ones. This transfers within a building or apartment budget, based on kind of how they allocate funds over the course of the year. The two bigger items in these budget revisions include the debt defeesance we did for Fund 39. So we used our fund balance in that to pay out some debt and save on interest costs for the community. And then the other one was from a grant that we received the funds for in '22, '23, but expenses were incurred this year and possibly a little bit in '24, '25, just based on availability and whatnot. So those revisions are made to really reflect those, that activity for the upcoming, or this current fiscal year. And one note with the budget revisions, per state statute, this requires a two-thirds board approval vote instead of just a majority.
And this is to the 23-24?
Yep.
All right. Do I have a motion on the budget amendments of the 23-24 budget?
I motion to approve the 23-24 budget revisions as presented.
I will second that.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Can I just have a moment to review? So just clarification, for the two attachments here, there's the 24-25 budget worksheet and then the slide deck for the board meeting?
The one for the budget revision should be titled Budget Change Notice for 23-24.
Oh, thank you. I apologize to board members, I'm looking at the wrong, the wrong attachment here. Thank you, Ben.
You're welcome.
I don't have any more need for time. Thank you.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion also passes unanimously. Thank you.
Next one's looking at the preliminary budget for '24, '25. So as we end one fiscal year and begin another one, this is an annual topic we typically bring forward to the board, just to kind of set a roadmap for the upcoming fiscal year. Obviously, most of the final pieces that we put in place occur in October, as we certify AIDS, Saks Levy, do the pupil count, get all those final numbers solidified. But what this does is really kind of get us set for the upcoming fiscal year, this is about to begin. And your documents and board docs, there's an attachment with kind of a breakdown of some of the major changes for the upcoming fiscal year. I will say there's been a lot of work that's gone into balancing the budget for the upcoming year. It was a significant challenge, just considering just all the factors going on with high inflation, you know, state funding where it's at, other pieces that are coming up over the course of the year or for the upcoming year. So working through those pieces, just to make sure we have a balanced budget for '24, '25, and then also setting ourselves up for the future as well. I think some of the positives from this budget include a, obviously, a balanced budget, CPI increases for all staff, and CPI increases a little bit above CPI for teachers, a Fund 46 deposit of half a million dollars, and then adoption of the ELA curriculum, starting that process in '24, '25, and that's a big ticket item as well. So like I said, a lot of hard work went into this to make it a balanced budget. It's difficult when you don't have enough resources to take care of everything you want to in the budget, but compared to other districts in the area and across the state, I think we're in a pretty good position, considering what I've heard from other districts looking at major deficits for the upcoming year.
Yep. As usual, thank you for the hard work and the creativity and the expertise in getting this put together. So it's been a real important part of our, of our, I guess, district philosophy over the last several years to have a good balanced budget, and it's out, you always done a great job, working it out for us and figuring out solutions, and appreciate it. Do I have a motion on the 2024 to 25 preliminary budget?
I would make a motion to approve the 24-25 preliminary budget as presented.
Second. Motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
For the line that said 4.12, did that originally say staff, teachers, and administration?
It did, yep.
Okay. And then the 1.50 for the teacher comp plan, I don't recall that one from what was posted previously. Can you just remind me where that is coming from?
Yep. Based on discussions with board members, looking at that distribution for compensation for teachers, that's really where eight, nine, and 10 come from. And so that used to be 4.12%.
Okay. No, no additional is needed. Thank you, Ben. And then, are we still on track for the reduced budget for legal expenditures?
Still tracking that way.
Still tracking, okay.
You've still got a couple days left.
Okay. Thank you.
Don't check the same.
I'm not trying to, trust me, but those were my, my quick questions at this time. Thank you, Ben.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion?
I must say, I'm a little dismayed that I see a 3% CPI increase for teachers when, during the open session of the last negotiations meeting, it was the curriculum, or the negotiations committee recommendation to send to the meeting a 4.12% CPI increase for support staff, teachers, and administrators. So I have to most definitely voice my disappointment and disapproval in that. So, I have to most definitely voice my disappointment and disapproval in that.
So, Kate, if you look at item ten, that one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand makes up the one, the additional one-point-two.
The issue with that is, is that four-point-one-two CPI goes to the base, which is what I believe and what was, you know, ultimately communicated, that that increase to the base was what was important. Three percent CPI increase to the base will arguably put them behind, and without a appropriate increase in CPI for the next budget cycle, it's not, it's not a four-point-one-two to the base, it's only three percent to the base, and I strongly disagree with that.
So, the additional one-point-one-two will still go to them? It will just come in the form of, based on performance?
Yes, and not to their base pay.
Correct. Okay, any more discussion?
I hit, just making a note briefly, so it does, we do have a note in the budget worksheet for the preliminary budget that the total increase to teacher compensation would be four-point-three-three percent for twenty-four, twenty-five. And Ben, in your discussion with other districts, can you just share kind of how that compares with what other districts are kind of ended up with this, for this year?
Sure, yep. Most of it's pretty informal we get from other districts because they're on different phases of negotiating with their union. So, most of it ends up being just some reported from other business managers or districts. But we do have, you know, informal surveys that go around, and they'll say kind of what they're expecting for the upcoming year and where they expect to settle. The survey that includes most of southeast Wisconsin, the average for the area is around four percent. Most districts are around four-point-one-two percent, so right at CPI. You know, there's some that may be a little bit above it, some below it, that's why that average is around four percent. But at that four-point-three-three percent, it makes us very competitive in the area, for sure.
Excellent, thank you.
Any more discussion?
And just to clarify, it is intentionally would-be, not could-be? For the, for the note, it would-be, not could-be?
Yeah, I mean, it's based on average, so technically probably could-be because evaluations are just coming in now, so we have to tell, calculate that and where that all comes through.
And that was kind of my understanding for this quick note, so I do appreciate it being brought up. When I read it, I read it as something safer would be to say could rather than would for that note, but that's my, it's a preliminary, right?
Probably different by one-hundred-and-thirty percent, because what pretty much that percent equates to is the total teacher compensation for twenty-three, twenty-four, and then how much we're allocating towards compensation for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yep, I appreciate it, Ben. Thank you.
Any more discussion, questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions?
Abstain.
All right, so you've got, that passes four to one, to one, and you're abstaining?
For the time, yes.
Is it because?
I don't, I don't intend to share my rationale for every vote, thank you, though.
Okay. All right, Ben, oh, thank you, something's done.
Our next item is our WISC resolution. So, WISC is a cooperative that goes across the state of Wisconsin, allowing municipalities, school districts to use. And it's a vehicle that is used to basically invest funds long-term through CDs or does higher interest accounts that we have. So, we currently use WISC, we've been using it for probably fifteen years plus or even longer. With this resolution that's being brought forward today, it's just updating the resolution and then updating the contacts of authorized officials on it to Kim Zabel and Jennifer Thompson, our district accountant.
Questions or motions?
I'll move to approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That motion passes unanimously.
And then, another annual item, it's a board policy that the board will review facility use fees every year. This has gone through the Personnel and Finance Committee. No changes being proposed for twenty-four, twenty-five, so the recommendation is to prove, prove as-is, as presented.
And these are the ones that were bumped up a bit last year, right? And just not changed this year?
Yep.
Thank you.
It's still working well, I take it? That's why we're keeping them the same?
Yeah, total revenue for the district is increasing or on scheduled increase, and that's gonna help offset, you know, we've talked about our long-term capital needs across the district, and so that'll help offset it a little bit.
I motion to approve the proposed facility use fee structure as presented.
I will second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right, the next three recommendations have also been forwarded to the full board by the Personnel and Finance Committee. Mr. Tony Derosa is available to provide more information regarding each recommendation.
Sure, thank you, Dr. Clark. This first recommendation is, is, we do this typically every year right around this time to make sure that we can in a timely fashion approve contracts when it comes to hiring other professionals, often times veterans from other districts. Commonly, they, other districts have liquidation fees for them to break their contract, and so we always want to move as quickly as possible when we're making our hiring decisions.
This is same, like we've been doing this, we do the annual, how many years ago? About ten years.
Yep.
Motion?
I'll move to approve teacher and administrator contracts extended to the best candidates to fill vacancies over the summer. I don't think I need that asterisk.
I will second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And related to that, Connie, I'm sorry, I wasn't aware of your, of your inquiry, but I can certainly get you that data tomorrow.
Yeah, that's okay. Thank you. I know a lot's been going on this week, it's fine.
The next item is, is seeking your approval on the proposed handbook changes that we went through in the PNF Committee. This has a short summary, you know, a couple of items typically bubble up during the school year, so really just looking to get this language in the handbook for clarity purposes when it comes to the exam days, PD record days, snow days, just providing some of that clarity in the handbook so staff are aware. The increments, we actually implemented that last year. Really was a great benefit for our students and our staff, allowing some of that flexibility for staff to put in sick time hourly, where, you know, sometimes someone might have something at the end of the day, they find internal coverage, and it really prevents our staff from having to take a full day or a half day, which is not great for our students and increases sub-costs. So, this was a well-received change in the handbook. And then, I'll scoot down to FMLA and extended leaves. These language changes are really just done in an effort to follow the letter of the law more clearly in our handbook, and when it comes to extended leaves, making sure that we are, you know, following guidelines, that they are necessary extended leaves for someone due to extreme medical situations.
All right, I think you went through these in PNF and discussed correction, how we're sorting through any issues that, that recommendation came in there, right?
Correct.
Got a motion?
I just had a quick question. Is the support educator, we're on, let's see, professional educators down here. Okay, no, thank you. Good.
I would make a motion to approve the revision to the twenty-four, twenty-five professional educator staff handbook.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion with motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Any more for Tony?
And item K is really just bringing alignment with the support staff handbook, with the educator handbook, so really asking for the same changes that were made with FMLA and extended leaves.
I motion to approve the proposed revisions to the twenty-four, twenty-five support staff employee handbook as presented.
I'll second. All right, yeah, we got it. All right, motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Dave, I did have, you're on the vote now, so it's fine, just go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Okay, if you guys are fine with it. So, I thought in PNF there was a portion that was related to if, and I'm just not finding the language here, so someone may just find it quicker than me, the forty-five day prior and having the, if someone doesn't have the ability to determine whether they're going to come back. So, am I missing the language that was discussed in PNF? Is it not here?
No, you, I think your question from PNF was receiving adequate leave or adequate notice before going on an extended leave. If there was an extreme circumstance that caught everyone by surprise and they couldn't provide that advance notice to go on extended leave, the language change was to say that we would certainly allow that leave with those extenuating circumstances. Because we talked about the application procedures in which it says it should be in forty-five days in advance, but we are aware that situations can arise where someone could not give that type of advance notice.
Okay, so I see the part that I was, that I had questions about at that meeting, it's that such application will be reviewed and processed by the Director of Human Resources and shall be granted or denied in his or her sole discretion. So, I think that's the part that was already approved in the other portion, it's the same language, right, for the full-time and now support staff, and, okay. So, I apologize, board members, this is, this was an area where I thought there was one word needed, and I don't think I made that clear at the last PNF meeting. I think it's fine as-is, but I believe when I was looking through this initially, I thought a May was appropriate somewhere. So, anyway, that's, that's it.
Okay, yeah, sorry if you jumped the gun there on the vote. Let's, let's review the vote on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I'm gonna abstain, and, yeah, thank you.
Okay, so that, Katie, were you, yes? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, that one passed five to one. Or five to zero to one, I'm sorry.
All right, the next recommendation is regard to the twenty-four, twenty-five district assessment plan, and Ms. Kirsten Collins is here to answer questions regarding that.
So, each year, we ask the board to approve, based on board policy, our assessment plan for the year. We discuss this in Curriculum Committee, very few changes, just some reorganization and removal of the BASS assessment as a screener in the beginning of the year because of the new ELA implementation. But before you is the plan for next year.
I motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five district assessment and testing plan as presented.
I will second.
Motion and a second. Is there some discussion? I have a question. Was there discussion at the Curriculum Committee meeting about the need for all these tests? I'm assuming we kind of have to have them, because we, we find our students often in these situations where they've got a standardized test, and this one common thing I hear from people in the community is, we really need to be doing all of this. I'm assuming we really do.
We do, and it wasn't specifically addressed in the Curriculum Committee, but that's something that we evaluate each year, and that's why that BASS assessment came off. We believe that the assessments in Amplify will be doing what we need. And then, also, one other thing is the high school is moving some fall assessments into regular classrooms, into the content areas, and normally, they'd have a day for assessments. So, we're getting that time back to, you know, the main instructional time. So, that was another revision this year, just to try to lessen that impact.
Yeah, good, okay. So, it's something we're thinking about and trying to work through all the time. All right.
I do have another question. I've heard some concerns just from parents about not only the amount of testing that was just addressed, but like the preparation for it. So, concerns about when these assessments come up, that there's time pulled away from regular content and prepping for that test. Can you address that and how often that happens?
Sure, generally, it ends up being a review of standards that maybe they have taught earlier in the year, and they review some of those things. The other thing we do is make sure students are comfortable with the testing environment so that they can demonstrate their best proficiencies. A lot of that we do through the iReady personalized instruction because it's a computer, you know, test, the kids take the test on the computer, and so they have some familiarity. I would say less and less of that has happened over the years because our assessments are so tied to our standards that we're teaching in the classroom.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the last recommendation is for the acceptance of donations to the district. This month, we have one donation from the Cedarburg Athletic Booster Club for three-thousand-one-hundred-sixty-one dollars and three cents. These funds will be used to support the Cedarburg High School athletic program. As of note, assuming this is accepted, the total donations for the year will be seventy-six-thousand-eight-hundred-thirteen dollars and seventeen cents.
Got a motion on the donations?
I'll move to approve. I will second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes unanimously.
All right, that concludes the recommendation portion of our meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. That takes us to the committee reports. I'm assuming we've covered almost all of this already, but let's start with Personnel and Finance Committee. Okay, that's all.
So, I believe we did actually cover all of the topics in our recommendations tonight, the food service, transportation, general insurance, budget revisions, excuse me, and also the preliminary budget, WISC resolution, the staff handbooks. We also did discuss the summer academy contracts.
Great. Thank you. Curriculum Committee meeting, Elizabeth Sharlin.
Yes, we met June thirteenth, and we discussed the twenty-four, twenty-five assessment plan, which we approved this meeting. Kirsten also presented on the iReady assessment results from this past school year. If you didn't attend that meeting, I recommend taking a look at that presentation, there's a lot of great data in board docs on that. We discussed the education for employment plan, which we approved this evening. And then, lastly, we discussed ReadWorks for Amplify CK LA, which will be a supplementary material that the teachers will be discussing at the grade level if they want to use any of those texts as part of the Amplify ELA curriculum. And our next meeting is July tenth, with Ally, the new curriculum director, will be joining us for that.
Great, thank you. Monday Buildings and Grounds Committee, okay, that's all.
So, we met this past Monday, June seventeenth. We got a lot of updates. The summer work update included everything that's being cleaned and prepped for next year. Update on the CHS air handling system. There may be some changes with that as far as replacing one of the handlers on the roof. In addition to that, there is some Cedarburg School District roof maintenance that's gonna need to take place. We also discussed a shed going in at Thorston Elementary by the Green Squad. And our future meeting date is September twenty-fifth.
Great, thank you. Like that takes us to the end of our agenda, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. What one to me is very efficient.